Good evening.
Hello.
Sorry, unmute. Hello.
Were you having trouble, Michelle?
Pardon me?
Were you having trouble?
Well, no, I just, I actually logged in on my MacBook, which I'm on right now, but I've got my other computer over there. I just, I wanted, so I'm at my dining room table here, so I've got more room to spread out my papers. So, but it's less comfortable, so I might switch over there. So we'll see.
You're in the meeting twice.
Oh, yeah, there you go. Yeah, so I'm kind of, yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, let me go grab my bottle of water and stuff.
Not a problem. Good evening, Judy.
Good evening. How are you today?
Doing well, and you?
I'm doing pretty good.
Good.
Yeah, I was afraid I didn't have my background on. Sorry, just a second. Nobody needs to see my messy office.
Good evening, Carl.
Hello, how are you doing?
Doing well. Are you recuperating well each day?
Uh, getting better. It's gonna be a while yet, but it's getting better.
Good.
Snow shoveling doesn't help a whole lot.
What's that?
Shoveling the snow doesn't help all.
Oh, the snow, yeah.
That's, that's not good to recoup with.
I'm sorry, Carl. I don't remember. Did you have a procedure done?
Yeah, it was six weeks ago, I guess now, or five, five weeks, I guess. But, but I'm getting better.
Do you mind if I ask what you had done?
Um, no.
Okay, never mind.
He probably doesn't want the whole United States.
That's all right.
To know that this is being recorded, Michelle.
Well, that's true, too. Very good, very good point, yeah.
The recovery on it is, uh, it's not pretty, so.
Yeah. You, you, you delivered a child, I'm sure, right?
Not as painful, but close. Has everybody survived the fourth largest snowstorm in, in history here?
You know, it went away pretty quickly.
It did, it did, yeah.
Nineteen eighty-two did not go away that quickly.
I say, I, I feel like Inglewood probably got more than just about anybody else in the city when you look at it, you know?
No.
Just kind of fun, you know, especially my friends out, except for maybe near the airport, you know, they got walloped.
Well, the whole purpose of moving the airport out there was to have no, no houses around it, which
That's over.
difference anymore, right? As a real truth, Judy, you know that, right?
Yeah, just fill them up out there. They can start filing noise complaints any day.
Isn't there like a big lawsuit by either Aurora or Adams County against DA or Den that is saying that there's too much noise and they're like, freaking people let them build right next to the airport?
Don't buy in Green Valley Ranch, hello.
Yeah. Well, heck, you can't even out east of Brighton by, um, the what's the lake out there anyways where everybody hunts, but, um, it's not coming to me, but I was showing ten acre properties out there. We were standing there and a plane flew over. I thought it was gonna land on top of me. It's like, who moves all the way out here to have a flame fire room?
Those folks, I'm missing my agenda. I'll be right back.
So, Chair, we are, you do have a quorum.
Okay.
We, we are just waiting for Kate Fuller and Diane, so, but you do have a quorum if you wish to start.
Well, let's give it one, well, let's give it one more minute. We're at seven oh two, so let's just give them one more minute and see if they should.
Okay. You're cool.
No problem, thank you. Yeah, I'm on my iPad today, which I'm a little out of practice using a mouse pad rather than a mouse, so we'll see how that goes.
I, I do think the picture is more clear, if that helps anything.
My picture?
Uh huh. The cameras, yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm at my dining room table today instead of my comfy chair, but, um, I'm like Judy, I don't want anybody to see my messy office, so it's either the comfy chair or it's the dining room table. I don't want you in my office, so.
Fair enough.
Yeah. Here we go, there's Kate. All right, well, let's go ahead and I'll call the meeting to order. Nancy, can you call the roll, please?
I can. Ms. Townley?
Yes.
Ms. Donaldson?
Here.
Mr. Hagerty?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Fuller?
Oh, just join. Good timing.
Uh, Ms. Lipowski?
Here.
Wonderful. Mr. Atkins?
Here.
Mr. Adams?
Here.
And Chair Austin?
Here.
All right, so we have a quorum. The first order on the, the first matter of business on the agenda is approval of the minutes from March second, twenty twenty-one.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Colin. Second?
Back in.
Thank you, Judy. Moved in second, and is there any discussion? Hearing none. Nancy, would you like to call the roll, please, for the vote?
Ms. Townley?
Yes.
Ms. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerty?
Yes.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Oh, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Lipowski?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
And Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Thank you, all right.
All right, sounds like the minutes were approved. Um, the next order of business is public forum. I see Jenny Nolan. Is that a member of the public?
Jenny is a part of the Inglewood staff. She is our budget manager.
Okay, all right. So Nancy, do you have anybody?
I am not showing any public.
Okay.
Everyone on this is staff or commissioners.
All right. All right, then, the next item on the agenda is the proposed amendments to the twenty twenty-one capital improvement product, improvement projects. And I believe we have our city manager to present this. Am I correct or incorrect on that?
That is correct.
Great. Welcome, Sean.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I really appreciate the opportunity to be with you all tonight and just want to start out as always and just tell you thank you for your service to the city. I know that this takes a lot of time. I also understand that had I not had this item for you tonight, you probably would have had the night off, so I apologize for taking up one of your evenings. We'll try to move through this relatively quickly, but we really want to give a flavor for what the projects that are being proposed are, where the money came from, and get your feedback and input as the charter requires us to. So I'll start out, and I want to thank Nancy also for running the slides tonight, so we'll go to the first slide or second slide. Um, the, the first thing that I want to review with folks is just where the funding came from and how we
Sorry, let me get there. There we go, sorry.
Great, no problem. And kind of where the funding came from and why it is that we, the funding came to be. So the first thing that we want to talk about is CARES funding. As you know, we were allocated three point two million dollars by the federal government, through the state government, through Arapahoe County to recover and respond to COVID nineteen. Of the three point two million, there were seven hundred and fifty thousand that as much as we tried, we could not get spent by the deadline of the end of the year. And so what we were able to do under the federal guidelines is turn in emergency services on the cost for emergency services during COVID nineteen, which was our police department. And so for the time that our police department spent responding, we were able to get reimbursed for that. The total reimbursement for it was seven hundred and fifty thousand, and so seven hundred and fifty thousand has been placed into the unassigned fund balance. So we wanted to look at that as a potential source of funding for some additional CARES related and recovery projects. And council said, yes, we agree, and we want to do that as well. The second source of funding is what we're calling the twenty twenty surplus. That is approximately one point six million that was not spent by the departments in the operational budgets or was just additional revenue that we received that we were not expecting. Because you may remember, we did a budget amendment that reduced the, um, the total budget in order to what we thought was make sure we were covering expenses in light of COVID nineteen shutting so many of our businesses down. That ended up, our revenues ended up exceeding our expectations, so we, that is what constitutes is that one point six million in surplus. LTAR stands for the Long Term Asset Reserve Fund, as you probably know. This was a fund that was set up several years ago in, in order to have a kind of a placeholder for property a fund that can accept funds when we sell property or potentially want to invest in property. And so that's what that was set up for, and that fund has continued to grow a little bit over time as we've continued to sell some land, for instance, out at near McClellan Reservoir. We sold a few years ago to RTD land for a transit center, and so that brought in some additional revenue. The problem is, city council and staff also have really never come up with a plan for how to spend that money. And so it is sat essentially unused for the last five years. Next is the unassigned fund balance, which you're all probably very familiar with. It's, it's our reserve. And so we have in the unassigned fund balance about nine million that is over what we're required to have by Tabor or the taxpayer bill of rights, state law, that says how much cities have to set aside for their essential rainy day fund. We also have our own fiscal policy that requires a sixteen percent reserve. So when you take those two kind of set asides that we have to have by either financial policy or state law, we still have about nine million that we have to spend, that, that we are considering about three million spending tonight. So, next slide. So this is a slide that you've probably seen when we present to the budget, excuse me, to the city council and talk about what we, you know, essentially what we have in the bank. And so these, this represents our various funds I mentioned there. The Tabor requirement, what we have to have on hand for Tabor requirements, the LTAR, you can see is four point nine million. I just rounded, rounded that up to five million. And then that unassigned fund balance right now that sets, sits at about fifteen point eight million. And again, if you look at that bottom number that's reserve available above policy, that's nine point one million right now. So, next slide. So before we get into the projects, and I'll, I'll pause after this slide to answer any questions about this kind of background, before we get into the projects, I'm going to tell you where the projects came from. This was not just kind of a wish list from council members or staff. This was really based on the unfunded CIP list, which you all are pretty familiar with, as you look at it every year and really give great feedback on that, as well as CIP projects that were slated for twenty twenty-three or after. Second, we looked at our Inglewood strategic plan. As you know, in twenty twenty, we adopted really one of the first, what I, I would consider, one of the first comprehensive strategic plans that really hits six focus areas of the city council. So as we looked at that strategic plan, there were a number of initiatives that were simply not funded. So some of the projects that you see tonight are more on the operational side, and we want you to have the full picture of what we're proposing even as we really focus on the capital expenditures that cap, that the Planning and Zoning Commission are going to be looking at. Next, we looked at some of the master plans that have been adopted recently. Some of those are longstanding, like the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We also, more recently have, we are working on, and it's about to come before council for final approval, a Wayfinding and Placemaking Master Plan. The Tri-Cities Homeless Action Plan comes out in May. And finally, the downtown master plan that was approved in twenty twenty, and our new downtown development board is going to be using as they try to work on continued revitalization of our downtown area. And finally, there were some projects that were added or pulled forward at the request from the CIP, at the request of council members. So we'll talk about those as well. So any questions about the funding sources? How we, the data sources that we use to come up with this project list or anything about the process? All right, well, I don't see.
I have a quick question. Hi, this is Judy. I'm just curious, what was the decision to do the three point five, six, five million instead of the full nine million? Or is there some other policy that we wanted to have the extra in savings?
That's an excellent, an excellent question, Commissioner. We, uh, well, there are a couple of things. First of all, there is a matter of capacity for city staff to be able to manage that many projects. As you know, we already have a relatively healthy CIP project list for twenty twenty-one. Adding another, for instance, nine million to that project list really is a little untenable and not feasible for city staff to be able to manage that level of projects. And so that would be the first thing I would say. The second thing is, I would say is that there are certainly members of the community, as well as members of, of council that still have some concerns about essentially spending it all at once. Even though that is above our reserve policy, we have had a very healthy unassigned fund balance and councils of the past, as well as members of the council now, some members, really feel like we need to have that extra cushion. Staff has realized really through COVID that our economy in Inglewood has, in my mind, the market corrected itself tremendously after Cinderella City. This city was incredibly dependent on sales tax from one big, you know, huge entity that was a, you know, a tax generating juggernaut. And over the years, we kept having to cut and cut and cut on staff and capital and other things as that, as them all continued to die. And at some point, the city kind of rightsized, I would say. And we now, I think, have a more diverse economy. We have more manufacturing income where that's a, that's a bigger percentage of our revenue stream than it was, for instance, when Cinderella City was here. We have more essential retail as opposed to, you know, luxury retail or, you know, something that would be more or less of disposable income type retail. A lot of our retail is something that people really need. So I, I think when you look at our revenue streams, you know, we think that we can, we will continue to have a healthy reserve and we have a very resilient economy, but that, we're not out of the woods yet. We could still have a shock, a natural disaster, an economic, a national economic recession that could leave us needing some additional funding beyond what just is the requirement. So that's a long answer to a simple question, but does that help?
No, that was very helpful. Thank you.
Uh, Colin has his hand raised.
Yeah, and thank you for presenting all this information. It's great to know that we're on that side of it as opposed to the other. I guess I understand the capacity of your staff to be able to do more projects is there? And I think I saw maybe a little bit later, potential to repay or pay down some debt that we certainly have, and maybe not all of that either, but is that going to be a consideration as well?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. We definitely think that that is an opportunity with Eve, and so we'll look at that. I think it's in the next to last slide under LTAR, so. Any other questions? All right.
I do not see any other hands. Are you ready to go to the next slide?
Yes, please. So we'll dig into the projects. Again, we've divided this into pods. It's really all in your unassigned fund balance, except for the LTAR or later projects. All of this money is already in your unassigned fund balance, but to kind of keep it, I guess, separated a little bit by type of revenue source, this is how we've broken this down. And council has really appreciated that we're trying to keep CARES Act money going to COVID-related expenses. So I'm going to run through all of these, but the ones that are highlighted are the ones that are really within the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission, because those are the ones that are capital projects. As you know, we've spent a lot of time and energy in the Community Development Department on Business Recovery Grants, so this would allow us to do another round of those grants. Nonprofits, the same, we've done a couple of rounds of nonprofit grants. We would do another one. I'm going to skip the next two. Restaurant Delivery Services, you may know there's a local coalition of restaurants that's trying to set up something like Uber Eats that would keep more of those dollars locally instead of spending. that would keep more of those dollars locally instead of spending or sending upwards of 20% or more back to Silicon Valley or somewhere else where those, those companies are headquartered. It would keep a lot of those fees here local. And so this would be seed money for that. And this was, became an acute need during COVID because our restaurants were so dependent on delivery services, but we're paying what we think are a bit exorbitant fees to, again, California companies. And then the rec center health measures, this is things like touchless washing faucets. It's, it's additional sanitation supplies and measures. It's some air filtration expenditures, all things that we consider to be more routine maintenance or things that we would, you know, have on our replacement schedule. So even though this dollar amount is over the 50,000 threshold, again, we don't consider these capital expenses per se, because individually they're, they're pretty small. And then recovery marketing, you know, we've been really aggressive in marketing Inglewood as a place to still do business. The "We've Got This" campaign is part of that. So we want to continue helping businesses with those marketing efforts. Though, next to our council requested items, mental health first aid training. You may have heard that we have a higher than usual rate of self-harm that's going on in our local high schools. And so the mayor and others on council are concerned that, you know, there, there are things that we could be doing as a city to support the school district, as well as just the community in general, on understanding, you know, mental health needs and concerns. And finally, the homelessness action plan, homelessness action plan implementation. I mentioned that the homelessness action plan is scheduled to come back to us in May. And we've got a Tri-Cities group that between Inglewood, Sheridan, Littleton, that's working together. We've hired a consultant and that, that plan is coming back in May. So this is really a set aside for some projects that we know will be recommended as part of that, as part of that plan. So I'll go back to the two capital projects. Council chambers, hybrid meeting and AV upgrade. You will probably all recognize this. I think you've recommended it at least twice in the past. And council has said, eh, we can hold off on that. Well, now that we are trying to go to hybrid meetings where we have people that may be calling in on Zoom as public comment folks, even council members who may not want to come back right away, but other council members do. We really need to have a technology upgrade that is very robust and substantial. It's, the, the old cost was about 200,000. With this new hybrid meeting that we're trying to go towards, the cost goes up. And so that's about $300,000 for those upgrades. And this will also help boards and commissions as well, including planning and zoning, for you all to have hybrid meetings too. Next is council chambers, air filtration. This is not just for council chambers. This will also serve the community room, as well as the court, municipal court. So putting some air filtration systems, additional air filtration systems on our air handlers on the roof of the civic center is only about $17,000. And this includes some contingency funds. But it will provide for better air quality and some health protections if we can do that. So those are the two projects. And I think maybe what we can do is stop between each of the four sections. So we just finished the first of four and maybe take questions. Or I can also just keep going through all of them and answer questions at once, either way.
I have a question, Sean. I went back and pulled last, good heavens. Well, anyway, the capital improvement plan items that we approved last year, last spring. And I do see that there was $200,000 audio visual for the council chambers, which looks like it's included in that $300,000.
Right.
And then down a little bit further, I see. Oh, I see, the IT infrastructure, which is one of the projects that we did recommend, but we, I still have a, I wrote down a question mark, so I'm not sure if we totally approved it or not, of $150,000. So I'm hearing that the $300,000 and the 20,000, well, I don't see anything on our project list from last year about council chambers, air filtration systems. Not that it's, I mean, I'm not saying it's not needed, but just a little, can you kind of make those numbers work for me a little bit closer?
I'll, I'll give it my best shot. And luckily Jenny Nolan is on the call. She's our budget guru, as you know, and can help with that too. But so the 150,000, if I'm not mistaken, was for our fiber infrastructure.
Yeah, it was IT infrastructure, right.
Right. And so that was funded. And so we are, we have released the RFPs for that project. And that project is getting ready to be underway. So that did get funded. And so it doesn't need to appear here because it's already funded in the 2021 CIP. The air filtration really, actually it was council member Anderson, who brought this up as a potential need, particularly as we come back to in-person meetings. In order to give the, the public the confidence to come back to in-person meetings, as well as council members, he and I think other council members as well, felt like that this would be an appropriate add-on, if you will, to the capital improvement plan based on COVID-19.
Well, that makes perfect sense, because as we know, we all know, there's a lot of changes that happened from last spring until now. So thank you for that explanation. Thanks.
Thank you.
Colin?
So if we had requested the 200,000 for the AV upgrades previously, why wouldn't it just be 100,000 more that you'd be looking for? Was that cut out in further iterations after we approved it?
It was. A- as you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends projects to council. Council doesn't necessarily have to take those recommendations. What I'll tell you is that I think last year, they took your recommendations at a higher percentage than almost any time in, in recent history. And so they really took your considerations into consideration. And so I suppose to your point, we could just be putting the extra 100,000 into CARES Act. The thing is, we probably wouldn't have even brought this project forward still to upgrade the AV systems in the council chambers, had it not been for COVID. So that's why we put this under the CARES Act category.
And then I guess just one follow-up on that. So I guess with all these, will these, we'll recommend again? And then council will decide whether they want to move forward, although there might be a higher likelihood of it this time, just with obviously the challenges that these meetings do present?
Absolutely. And you all have, I think in your packet, and certainly from years past, you have the, the CIP projects that were funded and not funded. And we really want you to take a hard look at those and see if you want to add projects to this. To Judy's point, excuse me, Commissioner, to, to that point, we are here to say, if, if P&amp;Z thinks we need to add projects, we do have capacity in that unassigned fund balance. If you think some of these projects are inappropriate and shouldn't be funded, then we'll also be taking that feedback tonight. And, and we can talk about that at an additional meeting as needed as well, so.
Maybe if I just keep going, that for just a second. I do feel like the, the business grant, a lot of these things are very important, almost still more than the AV upgrades. And so, I mean, if I said, say, we spread another 100,000 or 200,000 dollars over business grants and maybe some nonprofit grants and things like that, I would be very much in support of doing that. You know, I think the AV upgrades are important. I feel like we've kind of all figured some of this out, you know, we're making do. And just with so many other people, or even the mental health issues that, that we're having, I think those are super important. And I'd love to see just, you know, as much support for those as we can.
Yeah, I appreciate that feedback, so. Actually, I apologize. Nancy, are you or Jenny taking notes? I'm looking for a pen nearby to do that, and I'm not finding one. So with these notes, great, thank you.
And Diane?
Yeah, I, I wanted to add to Colin's note that I think that the mental health services is very important and really excited to see that on there. And I would be in favor of including the hybrid meeting AV upgrade and updating the business grants somewhat, if possible, if the 750 is not a cap.
Yeah, one thing that I do want to point out is that when the latest round of grants, and Nancy, you can probably answer this, but each time we rolled out another grant, we had less uptake, I believe, for those grants. Because frankly, businesses were opening up and doing better. And there were fewer businesses that were in as severe of a need. The nonprofit grants, we actually, I think, increased those. And in this round, we would be proposing increase of those as well. So I do want to make that point. And it looks like Director Power probably has a comment on that, hopefully to correct or affirm that.
To affirm, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to mention that on the business grant side, I think Sean is very much correct that we did have a gradual decline. But that's not to say if we revert course, we hope we don't, that the, that the demand will not increase. But the other factor in terms of our future business grant funding is the new federal legislation that was passed a couple of weeks ago is going to have significant opportunities for a lot of our local businesses, particularly in the restaurant sector. And so that's another factor that we're starting to try to take a little bit more of a look at as, as we get more information about what that federal money will cover. But what we know so far is the business community here and also around the country, the small business community, will have access to new federal funding, but actually in some instances is well beyond the CARES Act funding that was last year. So I just thought I'd add that.
Yeah, I really appreciate that, Brad. That's a great point. It's actually seven. Right now, our formula is calling for over $7 million. And as I mentioned, we struggle to spend the 3.2. Now granted, the first round of CARES was more, was more restricted. This next round, which we, we haven't really dug into all of the details, because we're still getting trainings and going to webinars on this new round of American Rescue Act, I think it is, ARPA, maybe. That act is going to provide far more stimulus money, of which over 7 million will come to the city of Inglewood. So we're going to be coming back to you another time. This is going to be the weirdest year of your CIP planning, P&amp;C feedback, because we are just going to be coming into money, not only like this, but in the even larger pot that's coming. And those are going to be a lot of capital projects. What they, what that act is calling for is water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. So we're going to be coming back to you with expansions of those CIP projects. But for now, what we know is that this is the money we have for CARES, so.
And I would just like to remind the commissioners, I, I think we could all agree that the, excuse me, the business grants and the mental health and those sorts of programs are important too. We would all would like to have some of this extra money spent on those things. But our, our chore tonight is to focus on the capital improvements, not the other. What I, the word, we need to focus on the hard dollars rather than the soft dollars, if that makes any sense. So we can get through this meeting. For example, I know that from the last round, last year, we had the Civic Center facility rehabilitation repairs for $100,000. So that would be something that we might be able to, since that was the capital improvement that we could look at down the road. And I don't know, Sean, I don't want to burden the staff too much. But maybe if there's time, if there is staff time after we get through this meeting, if there's additional dollars to be spent that need to come out of the capital budget, maybe someone could generate a list of things that we did not approve or were not funded last year in our capital improvement budget that we could add while we still have these dollars available. Does that make sense?
It does. It's a great question. And I bet that our budget manager has that at the ready. And maybe by the end of the meeting, we can throw that on screen after we get through all the projects. Jenny, correct me if that is not correct, but I suspect you, you have something you could show us on what was not funded? Is Jenny still on the call?
Yes, I'm here. I will do my best. Let me, let me bring that information to the forefront.
You've got plenty of time, if we do it at the end of the meeting. But I do think that would be really helpful, especially after we go through the unassigned fund balance.
Well, and I'll, I'll be perfectly honest. I don't know if all of us, including myself, really have taken the time or even know where to find what our proposals or what our recommendations were to council and what was actually approved. So we may have a little bit of muddy waters to wade through in this whole discussion.
We can look at that for sure. I think maybe Commissioner Brown was next.
That not on the last page, the unfunded project requests of our packet? Is that what, what we requested but didn't get funded?
No, no, that was just one of the categories of, the four categories of funding that we kind of put, we use as buckets to put projects into that were more or less related to that particular fund. Like LTAR, those are later fund projects are related to property. The CARES Act product, the bucket of CARES Act is related to-
No, 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 the very last page of our, of the budget that came in our packet, it says unfunded project requests. It's Cushing Park, Inglewood Rec.
Oh.
Jason Park, is that all the, I didn't know if those were the ones that we had talked about but didn't make the cut. Anyways, I didn't want, I just thought we might already have that.
That's a great question. Nancy or Jenny, I know you guys worked on the packet after I threw it to you and left town for the weekend. Do you know if that's correct, what Commissioner Brown is saying? That that was included in the packet, the unfunded items?
Jenny will know better, but I do know we included this, the CIP pages out of the 2021 or 2020 budget, excuse me. Jenny, were those the unfunded ones or the ones that were funded?
Well, what, what I included was everything that was included in the budget document. I believe the, the items that we discussed with P&amp;Z were the tier one projects. And I think that that was almost $15 million initially. And we had to whittle that down to what we were able to fund. So let me get, let me pull that together, that list for you. But this, this, the packet that you received this past weekend, that was all encompassing. We did have some large parks projects that we didn't even have funding for, but we wanted just to make council, citizens, everyone aware that there were greater needs in the city.
Thanks, Jenny.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I think Kate has her hand up. Kate Fuller. But I can't see everybody, so I don't know.
Um, I just had a question about this list before we move to the next slide. Um, what kind of impact does the mental health first aid training for residents and youth kind of include? And, because I was wondering if maybe we could find that more. But I kind of wanted to hear what $50,000 gets us.
Yeah, and, and I do want to hearken back to what the, the chair said a few minutes ago, that we did want to give you really the full picture of what we're looking at using from these various funding sources. But again, P&amp;Z is really only able to recommend with regard to capital funding. That said, we're glad to answer these, you know, questions about these other items. Mental health first aid training is really a placeholder for something to, you know, partner with the school district or possibly do our own kind of partnering with some of the other nonprofits in the area that, that work in mental health to provide some training for residents, for youth, for parents that can really help them to spot signs of, you know, mental challenges that are going on with, with youth. And so just to give you an example, in my last city, we had a couple of really horrific mental, mental health tragedies in the community. You may remember the Craigslist woman who was selling clothes and her womb was cut open by someone, you know, wanting, pretending to want to buy the clothes. The fetus was removed. It was a horrible tragedy in Longmont. And we started doing mental health first aid training and trained over 200 folks as train the trainers that were then able to, you know, go into their neighborhoods and do additional training. So it really was a widespread kind of effort to get people more educated on, on how to spot, as well as respond to and assist folks and, and, and connect them to professional resources for mental health services.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Yeah, I was just, I know we can't really make an impact on this one, but I was, I'm kind of surprised to see it so low. I know this was before what happened yesterday, but, you know, what happened in Boulder could have been proactively prevented by some of these cool things that you're talking about here. So I just thought it was kind of timely.
It's definitely a placeholder. The problem is, we do, this is- It's definitely a placeholder. The problem is we do, this is one of the few items in here that's a placeholder. The rest of the, well, that and mental and homelessness action plan, because everything else is a very like specified, we know exactly what we're going to spend on. But the, the mayor and a couple of council members brought this one forth, and, and so we're still kind of deciding what would be best. So we've got a meeting with the school district next week to talk about this. We met last week with Tri-County Health and all of their mental health professionals to talk about what would be, have the most impact. So we really want to use this 50,000 to leverage other funds, maybe grant funds, and really have the most impact we can, so. Think Commissioner Atkins has his hand up?
Uh, thank you. Are there any restrictions on the funds that we're discussing this evening? And to, or actually, I guess if you could answer that question, then I have a, a follow on.
No, no, this funding, you, it, we are putting it in a CARES Act bucket, but really it's just part of the unassigned fund balance at this point. We're just trying to kind of be true to the original purpose that the federal government laid out.
For the, you know, funds that should be arriving in the future due to federal legislation that are, you know, for specific uses I guess if we spend this money, and by this money, I mean everything this evening, on things like infrastructure and then won't be able to spend future money on non-infrastructure items. Just wanted to understand if that's being considered, and if that's influenced any of the things that have gone into what we're considering tonight.
Uh, I, I think the short answer to that is no, because we're still trying to determine exactly what we can spend CARES, um, excuse me, the American Rescue Plan Act. A R A P, no, A R P A, anyway.
Close enough, close enough.
Yeah, you know what I'm talking about. That, those funds, the challenge for Inglewood is that we didn't have the severe revenue reductions that many city have, cities have. So what the new act is letting cities do is refund themselves for where they didn't make their budget. The problem is, we got pretty close to making our budget. We really, because of our diversified economy, we were in much better shape than other cities. So we are going to have a more restricted pot of money to spend. Whereas those other cities that are just replacing revenue from 2020, they're going to have, sky is the limit on what they can spend. So we're still trying to in Inglewood, determine how this act is going to play out and how we can spend that 7 million.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, thanks, Nancy. We can, I think, go on. All right, second one has more CIP projects. So again, the surplus dollars, 1.5, 1.6, we haven't audited the books, finished auditing the books from 2020, so we're still, we know that it's going to be approximately that dollar amount. So of that, we are looking at two main buckets here of streetscaping and placemaking, 270,000. You may remember that the planning and zoning recommended, I believe, 90,000 total for placemaking and streetscaping and place make, well, it was actually more wayfinding and placemaking. So this is actually broadening that out to streetscaping as well. So when you think of streetscaping, as you probably already know, you can think of the medians that are, that are landscaped, or in our case, absolutely not landscaped. You can think of the right of way on the side of the road where you have the sidewalks and, you know, downtown has street trees. Well, in South Broadway, we don't have many street trees. We don't have benches. We don't have trash receptacles. We don't have specialty lighting to really create a unique and area with a lot of character that hopefully drives more business in the area. So these are things that are really focused on that effort. So looking at putting in around $200,000 into South Broadway right-of-way beautification, so this would not be the medians. We, we are talking about meeting as medians in another slide. But this would be 200,000 for, for instance, banners to create more pageantry. This would help us to, you know, put in an irrigation system that would serve future street trees in a, in a following years on CIP, for instance. So anything we can do to start laying the groundwork to, to really beautify South Broadway and make it a more special place and to increase economic development. The downtown overhead light design, I don't know if any of you heard the interviews for the DDA board that's being formed. I think about half of the folks who interviewed for that said, why don't we have overhead lighting or some sort of specialty lighting in the 3,400 block that really sets downtown apart? This would just be some design funding to design that. That is not a simple, people think like you just string some lights over between the light poles. Well, it's got to be engineered, wind engineered, ice engineered, all kinds of things, electrically engineered. So this would be to do the design work to, to be able to have a plan for 2022 CIP to install that. Or for the DDA to use that out of their own funds, which they hope to raise. South Broadway's streetscape construction documents. So this is, it's kind of interesting because we, and Brad, you probably, or John, could speak to this better, but I recently was, someone shared with me on staff streetscape design plans that were done, they were conceptual. We have never created construction documents where an engineer, you know, works with the designer. You actually do something we could put out to bid. So the first thing you have to do in order to build something like this is you have to have construction documents to request bids from various contractors. So this would be to actually draw up those construction documents. So going back up to that first one, the right-of-way beautification would be more things like the street banners, maybe some the pedestrian amenities, but the actual streetscaping, which is more kind of reconstructing in some cases, the sidewalk, that's what we don't have construction documents for yet. And that would be about 40,000. Moving over to streets and alley maintenance, as you know, we have been trying to put about at least a million dollars towards street maintenance and repair. And this would put an additional million dollars. Now, the good thing about these projects in both alley and street is that we already have existing contracts with contractors to do this work. So all we do is say, you've got another million dollars or another $200,000 to work with, so do twice as much work. And we're really hopeful that if this gets approved by you all, as well as council, that we can do way more street maintenance and repair as well as alley maintenance in 2021. And, you know, the alley maintenance, as you know, is cutting that V into the alley, you know, getting a hardened surface that uses a chemical process to make a more resilient dust-free alley experience, which is greatly needed according to our residents. And then street maintenance, this would be seal coating, this would be some mill and overlay where we grind down the surface of the roadway and then put a new surface on it. So it's, it's either of those type of projects to really make our street, the quality of our streets better as well as preserve them and extend their life, which saves us money in the long term. So any questions about these projects?
I have one quick question. I'm, I'm sorry, Colin. We last spring, we approved or recommended the approval of $300,000 for alley maintenance and and I see that it appears that 200,000 was, was approved by a city council. So I think that one of the, the main things I hear from residents is the alleys. They, the alleys are just, it's anything you can do to improve the alleys is a priority. So I just wanted to bring that up, that it would be nice if maybe we could, I mean, I know we're talking about a total different fund now, but any money we can throw towards alley maintenance and improvement, in my opinion, is money well spent.
You know, I think that would be something for us to note, if we get, I have additional money that's essentially surplus from 2020. This slide says 1.5. I, I think I heard today, it's now as the audit is getting wrapped up, it's a little bit more. So, so we could use your comment as a recommendation to staff to beef that particular line item up here. We almost put alley maintenance in capital projects, but it's kind of iffy, and Jenny and I had a good discussion about this. But we'll pass your feedback along to council, so.
Thank you. I think Colin was next.
And maybe I could make it easier for you, so it's not in maintenance. I think alley reconstruction, I understand the the reality that, that you've come up with a concept to improve the alleys, but I honestly think paving our alleys, as much as I hate new impervious area, the water quality benefit of not having dirt and everything else running off into the street is huge, and I think we need to invest more into our actually alley paving program, and I didn't see that later in the other section, so I'm just going to bring that up now. Definitely, if we can add that. And then what I don't know is something like street sweeping, would that come into this? I think that's something that we should consider. I don't know if that's more of a maintenance or if that can be some sort of capital program to be able to get the trucks that we would need to do that. I think that's, you know, the amount, and I think that can actually be part of the ARPA potentially, because that is a water quality benefit, if you want to kind of spin it that way, that you're actually removing sediments and garbage and all that things from your, from your waterways.
Yeah, that's a great comment. The, the street sweeping is actually all contained within our stormwater fund. So because we have federal stormwater quality requirements, street sweeping is a key part of that. People think, why are you moving my car just so we don't have as much dust on the road? Well, it really has nothing to do with that. It's a secondary benefit to get better air quality from street sweeping and beautification, but it's actually to keep our, our rivers and our lakes clean. And so those activities are contained within the stormwater fund, so separate from this, which is general fund. But I appreciate the comment. What was your first comment? Oh, oh, the alleys. I asked, yeah, I asked Director Deandre, our Public Works Director, year, last year, when we're doing the work on cutting that V in onto our, into our alleys and doing the hardening, et cetera, does this get us further down, a, a step closer to having paved alleys in the future? And she said, yes and no. Certainly, the, the work that we're doing to reshape the alleys, that helps us get, you know, one step closer to being ready to pave alleys. The, the other work that we're doing doesn't necessarily contribute to that, like the hardening, because we would still have to have some better base material that would be put down on the, on the alley. So I'm in 100% agreement with you in terms of alley paving. Council chose a few, a few years ago, I think it was before I got here, to not go that direction at this time. But, you know, I think as we continue to progress as a community, I hope that that's kind of on, on the agenda, so we can pass that along. But, but to answer your question, there is no alley paving program. So that's why you don't see it later, because there's no such fund, there's no such program in, in anywhere in the city budget. We just have the alley maintenance program that's really just reshaping and then putting a resurfacing, if you will, but not with paving alleyways. I think there's another question, Diane?
Diane, can I jump in really quick? Just, thank you. There is on the capital improvement plan and alley paving, nothing was approved in 2021, but there is 500K in 2022, 800K in 23, 800K in 24.
Right, we, we have $0 in this, in this year, and it remains to be seen whether or not, you know, the council would see fit to proceed with that in 2022, but.
Okay.
I think it's on the radar, but it, we would, we were, we're going to have to get council approval for that, because it's a pretty big shift in policy for the city.
Thank you.
I think Diane and then Carl, according to my observations.
Thank you. Yeah, I, just to tack on to Colin's comment again. I do, I do think the alleys are a problem and need to be addressed, but I, I would really, I'm not sure if this is the correct forum, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I would encourage council and others to consider looking at more sustainable approaches or more active green approaches, like green alleys. I know that the Trust for Public Land has done a lot of work on that in Los Angeles and other kind of more dry climate cities. I mean, I've seen a lot of that in the wet cities too, but I know that it's something that could be done in some of these more arid conditions like we have. And considering that Inglewood has, you know, such constrained space for parks and open space, if we start to consider our alleys as part of our green infrastructure, I think that would really work toward the Inglewood comprehensive plan as well. And then, and then my, so that was more of a comment. And then the other one was a question, a clarification on what you said. So the streetscape construction documents for $40,000, would that include documentation of the beautification? Or would, or would the streetscape design be for design work and construction that would be coming from another bucket of money?
That's a great question. So the, what's, what's noted here on the South Broadway Streetscape Construction Docs of 40,000 would be just to draw up the plans. But there's a lot of, you know, in the field kind of analysis that goes into that survey work, tremendous amount of survey work has to be done onsite for that, looking at, you know, where water mains are to tap in, to tap into for, you know, the irrigation systems and that sort of thing. So it, it would be to do that. The South Broadway right-of-way beautification would be things that are not quite so permanent, like a tree well is a pretty permanent improvement in a sidewalk. Whereas a bench or trash cans or banners for the light poles to really beautify the area, that's, that's what we're talking about on the first category.
Yeah, that makes sense. I was going to say, 200,000 sounds like a lot of money, but I know from experience, it doesn't seem like quite enough to do streetscape reconstruction.
Yeah, if we did everything from Hampton to Bellevue, it would be, I don't know, I'm going to throw out $7 million. I mean, it would be tremendously expensive, depending on how extensive you wanted to go. I think if we, you know, upgraded, if, if we just had trees along there and, you know, pedestrian amenities, I think it would greatly enhance that area. And then, you know, you can phase in things like specialty lighting, or not specialty lighting, but, you know, like the decorative light poles that Carl loves so much.
Thank you.
Carl, I know you had your hand up. I think you and I both have an, an old version of Zoom, so I can't electronically raise my hand, but I did see your hand up in your pitch.
I have a question. I kind of covered a couple areas. It's a paving of the alleys, it's, I've always felt that when they do the storm drains and they put the storm drains in the alleys in the S3 area, there, wherever they put a storm drain in an alley, they should give that alley, and I'm not sure if that cost of that alley paving would be in the storm system allotment or in the alley maintenance. I'm not sure where that'd be. We've, we've just got the, what drains we could clean, cleaned out. And every time you get a rain and the gravel runs down the alley right into the drain. So to pave the alleys, that they should have priority in paving, once they get the storm drains in.
That's a great point, Commissioner, and we, I believe in the S3 prod, uh, project, that is called for, and that would come out of the stormwater fund in that case. But, yeah, it's a great point, and we'll make a note of that to double check that that's what the plan is, but I'm almost sure that it is. And it's pretty rare to have those drains in the alleys. We don't have very many of them, but you're right, in S3, we've got at least one that is, as you know, a perpetual problem that's planned to be addressed as part of our stormwater projects.
One other thing, the, the 7.5 million that's going to be coming in, how much of that will go to the master plan? Will, will any of that be used for the master plan? And then the remainder on the capital improvement?
Well, we have multiple master plans. Which one are you speaking of?
I'm not sure. Whichever one that do it be able to, to absorb that money.
So.
Because, well, we, we don't do the master plan correctly. We, we're just doing the capital improvement.
Right, so we have a Parks and Rec master plan. We have, of course, we have the cap, I mean, the comprehensive plan and planning and the, the planning department. I'm not sure which, which master plan you're talking about.
I, I'm not sure which one it would be, but there was, I don't, I didn't realize there was multiple. Now that you mentioned the, the parks, I, I realized there are multiple ones.
Yeah, but we, what we tried to do is really make sure that these projects all fit into one of our master plans and/or the existing CIP that just hasn't been funded yet. And so that was really our goal with the, this project list.
Let's wait for the money to come in first, Carl.
It's on its way. It's in the mail.
Check's in the mail.
Yeah.
Does Colin, do you still have your hand up?
Yeah, if I could maybe just follow up on the lighting one, one of, I think the items that we've heard a lot about is safety lighting on just like a block, block off of Broadway in some of those parking areas. As being, you know, maybe a concern of, of some of the individuals, that it doesn't seem like there's enough lighting kind of right around the downtown area. So like Broadway itself is okay, but then you kind of go through, you know, the, the two pedestrian areas in between the buildings and you're kind of into like a darkness back there. And so maybe if there was any ability to include with some of the downtown overhead lighting designs, if we funded that a little bit more to extend out into those parking areas to kind of allow people a little more safe feeling, I think would be good.
And you specifically mean the parking areas back behind the, like the buildings that front me, Eric Broadway?
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's great. Yeah, we'll make a note of that as a possible, something we could add to the unassigned fund balance list as well.
Thank you.
So Nancy, or are, are we creating a list of things that we'd like to see added to the next round of potential funding? Nancy?
I'm writing these things down that all of you are saying.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Yes, definitely. Thank you to Nancy, and I'm sure Jenny is helping too. I do want to mention that the funding is already in the bank, because as Judy mentioned, we, we've got more capacity in the unassigned fund balance. So the projects that you're listing tonight, and really, maybe Nancy can kind of give those back to us at the end of the meeting, and we can go ahead and just make that your recommendation to add to the unassigned fund balance when council reconvenes to discuss the final list. So, so the funding essentially is already in the bank.
That'd be great.
All right. Well, let's go on to the third, next to last slide. So again, LTAR or later Fund was created several years ago. It was really focused on property acquisition and sales. And I think that what the council at that time thought we could do is, you know, use property acquisition or selling a property as a way to generate sustainable revenue. So you think about McClellan Reservoir, and you know, the fact that we, you know, were able to construct the reservoir, buy up the land around it for, for quality, water quality in the area, but then sell it off at a, and many times at a premium, sometimes not as good of a return as we should have probably had. But it's been able to generate a lot of money. So the money now, though, as we are a built out city, we don't have the need for a lot of additional new facilities. You know, we've, we've got probably enough parks to satisfy our population for a number of years. We need lots of improvements to the parks, but we, we don't have a lot of land left to acquire. So what the, the council has talked about, and, and this one actually came from staff, was to look at Eevee as a way of freeing up 1.4 million over the next two years in the, the general fund. So as you know, Eevee stands for Inglewood Environmental Foundation. It was kind of a separate organization that was set up to deal with all the environmental remediation that was needed when we took down Cinderella City. So there was a lot of asbestos, and really, who knew what was going to be in there? So they set up this, this, this foundation to really kind of deal with those assets and make sure that it was handled correctly. As you know, there's been lots of controversy around Eevee in the last five to 10 years. This would allow us to essentially end Eevee. We think it served its useful purpose and its useful life. It's done what it needed to do, and now it's simply holding debt. But the good thing is, we recently passed the penalty period for paying off that debt early. So we could get out of the next two years, it's already in the budget, the 1.4 million is in the budget for 2021. But we could, we could save ourselves at least a million dollars in the next two years, probably more. The reason it's not going to be a full, the full 1.4 million that we pay every year and have then for 20 something years is because we still are gonna have to provide common area maintenance for Qdoba, all those businesses that are in the Eevee area. So we are providing snow services, landscaping services, security services, and we're paying all of that out of Eevee. And they, those businesses all pay into a common area maintenance fee. But again, if we could take that on as a city, we would have to add some staff members. But again, we would be saving over a million dollars a year if we could go ahead and retire that debt early, which really frees our general fund up for additional, you know, services. So I think I hit all of those topics. Oh, also, I didn't mention this, but we do think it would also kind of put city council back in the driver's seat on the redevelopment of city center. Right now, the Eevee Board, which is made up of directors of the departments and a handful of them, they essentially make decisions with regard to the Eevee property. Now, council certainly has a lot of influence on that process, but by doing away with Eevee, we really are putting council back in the driver's seat with regard to the redevelopment of Eevee properties. And then the second project that is certainly a capital project is Little Dry Creek Plaza. You, you may remember last year that you all recommended some funding for that. Council approved that funding. And then we were able to use the money that we had, plus what Mile High Flood District put in, which I think was, I think it was about a million, no, 750,000, I think it was, that the Mile High Flood District put in, because Mile High doesn't like the fact we have the duck pond. They do not think that it's really the most effective way to convey stormwater through that area of the city. We have had perpetual problems as staff maintaining the, what's called the bladder. It's a dam, part of the dam that creates the duck pond. It failed, I don't know, five to 10 years ago. It's never been repaired. And so what Mile High Flood District wants to help us do is rechanalize that into a stream. It's a, obviously, it's a creek. But rechanalize that, you know, do away with all that sea of concrete that was used for the former pond and really allow people to go down and interact with the water, create more kind of event and gathering space in that vicinity. And so this additional 2 million would allow us to do a lot of the things that are, are in what we were considering Phase Two. We were hoping to do Phase Two in 2022, maybe 2023. This pushes up that timeline and lets us combine Phase One and Phase Two and get more bang for our buck with a contractor and get that park, which it's essentially a park, Little Dry Creek Plaza, completed in something that we can really be proud of again as a community. So any questions on this 4.8 million?
I don't have any questions, but I'm old enough and long enough Inglewood resident that a long time ago, you used to have fishing derby contests in that little duck pond over there, but that you haven't had those in a long time. But anyway, just my aside comment. So anyway, I see Kate's hand up.
I am absolutely thrilled to hear that this could be going forward. I guess one question with this, where does that project end? Does it still end then where the bladder is, that it would just go into a pipe, or that would still be, to be determined in terms of the connection between that site and the South Platte?
Yeah, so the limits of this particular project would go from Broadway, on the Broadway Bridge there, to the dam where the dam is now. And then it would go from Hampden back to the, essentially the edge of the parking lot behind the chamber slash bank building, the spaceship building in that area. So that would be the, the limits of the project. Does that answer your question?
I, I guess in terms of stormwater conveyance, if I'm using the right word, there would be improvements that happen at the park site, taking up some of the concrete or where the pond and things like that are now, that could help with more infiltration. But then essentially, all the water still would go into a gigantic pipe under that parking lot. And that would have to be a separate project, if ever that happens.
Yes, exactly. And Commissioner Townley, you probably know this already, so forgive me if I'm stating the obvious, but council, I mean, 2020 put in their strategic plan that they would like to examine in the future, opening up Little Dry Creek. So it's been in a, in a tube, essentially. It's been in a, undergrounded for many, many years. And council is interested long term in opening that up for more open space, if you will. But yes, it's, it's definitely not going to change that. This project won't change that, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Looks like.
Nancy, I see Carl's hand up, but maybe you see others.
I do not see Carl's hand, but he, but he is off mute.
Yeah. He's doing it, he's raising his hand the old fashioned way.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't see the, everybody on camera with my shared screen, so.
The where the, where the Little Dry Creek goes under into the tunnel, or they'd have to have quite a grate to keep people out of there. Otherwise, they'd run through that tunnel, clear down to the, to the Platte River. But they have to put some kind of a grate in there that will not plug up when the floods come down there. Because there's a lot of water that comes down there. And the, the, one of the reasons there was a flood in the Rotolo Park was a mattress pushed up against the grate and blocked the, the piping there, so the Rotolo Park flooded. It'd have to be some kind of grate that would allow have a big enough area to allow, allow water down here with a bunch of branches and whatnot against the grate.
That's a great point. I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that. That has actually already been ordered. So the Parks Department has already put in the order for that grate. I think that's one of the, kind of the first steps of that project. So it's a great point. And yeah, it's underway. All right, I think we're ready to go on to the final slide, although this is the biggie. So again, the unassigned fund balance, it's the reserve policy, the rainy day fund, all of the other projects that you've seen, except for the later project or LTAR, those have all been also unassigned fund balanced, but this is what we're calling really the projects that we want to pull, draw down the unassigned fund balance to get it a little bit more aligned with our, with the Tabor requirements, as the taxpayer bill of rights requirements, as well as our reserve policy. So in the safety area, we had a change on this today. The Police Department has changed, this is a CIP project that I think was scheduled to take place in 2022 or possibly 2023. The Police Department has asked that this be lowered to 50,000 and be spent on a new software system that will tie into the state for a variety of child protection systems. And so everything from child pornography to child abuse and, and reporting on that. It's a, it's a software system called Celebrite, and you can look that up. I have not dug into it deeply, but they, I do have a proposal in my inbox from the Police Department to modify this. So I wanted to let you know that. It's still a capital project. But police just don't think at this point that it's, they would much rather have that than the parking enforcement system. And the parking enforcement system, I should mention, is a license plate recognition software and hardware package to where our parking enforcement officers just drive around and automatically generates who's overtime after they make a second pass. So if we don't fund it this year, it's fewer parking tickets. And the Police Department really feel, feels like it's more important to get that child protection software. The next one is SEPTED. That stands for Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. It's a way of looking at public facilities and even private property in saying, how can we design this better to, to reduce crime? So when we look at Cushing Park, I use this as an example. It's kind of my bad example of the city. It was, that shelter was designed, almost appears to encourage crime. There are so many places to hide in that thing, and, you know, who knows what goes on behind that. You can't see it from any roadway. It's so protected. We need to really look at our facilities and say, where could we add lighting to reduce crime? Where can we change the landscaping to reduce crime? How could we redesign the actual structures themselves or reposition them to reduce criminal activity that's occurring? So environmental design is incredibly important to reducing crime and to allow enforcement to be, to be better. So that's what that 50,000 is for, is to, to analyze all of our parks and city facilities. And then the traffic calming projects, you may know that you put, recommended, I believe, 200,000 in the 2021 project, budget. This would provide another 200,000 for things like curb extensions, or sometimes they're called bulbouts, to where at intersections, you pop the curb out for farther into the intersection, which gives a driver the sense that the road is narrowing. It's a natural way of slowing down traffic. You can do the same thing with, you know, small roundabouts, converting, you know, some intersections instead of a four-way stop to a roundabout. And so this would be additional funds to do that work. Under local economy, quite a bit here, this first one, historic preservation projects, there are a number of projects that are under consideration. We're meeting with the historic preservation folks, the Historic Preservation Society folks next week to talk about some of this. But for instance, plaques to really interpretive plaques to tell the story of Inglewood throughout the community. This could help us with acquisition or renovation of historic properties that the city may be interested in. The entryway gateways, this is part of our wayfinding and placemaking master plan. So if you think about the, the large grass sculpture, it's called Bear Day something on the north end of town on Broadway. That was planned, those, that type of sculpture was planned for all four entrances to the city on North and South Broadway and East and West Hampden. The city ran out of money, the recession hit, we could only fund that first one. So this would help us to fund some additional gate, big, kind of, significant gateways to say, you are here and welcome to Inglewood. And so that's what that would be for, consistent with our wayfinding master plan that will be approved, I believe, on the 5th. The Northway Hampden medians, again, as I mentioned, I think it was the newest council member, Steve Ward, said, we don't, we don't have, he said, it looks like a moonscape coming into Inglewood on some of our, our, you know, main thoroughfares, because our medians look like, you know, a desert. Just a place where plants and trees go to die. I couldn't agree more. We've let all of the irrigation systems in our medians, with a few exceptions, deteriorate to the point that they all need to be upgraded, because you can't keep things alive, as you know, in Colorado very easily without irrigation, even ziriscaped plants have to have irrigation the first couple of years. So this would allow us to get all the irrigation systems upgraded, start putting plants back into these, as well as really, you know, hardy grasses, mulch, things that will really beautify those medians and give people a sense of place when they're in Inglewood. It's also an opportunity for public art, and the Cultural Arts Commission is interested in looking at how we can use our medians as places to put art in. Next is the North Broadway Hampden medians and right of ways. So this is, you, you saw the south one in the other slide. This would do, do some of the medians on North Broadway. Those medians are in a little bit better shape, particularly in the downtown area. But there are a number of areas where we just need to reconfigure every, about every seven to 10 years, you need to completely start over, with the exception of trees, on your landscaping. The grass has become overgrown, the plants die, the irrigation systems are failing. And so it's time, it's been almost 20 years since most of those medians were, had that kind of TLC. And then the next one, Old Hampden, streetscaping and walkability improvements. This is something that Councilmember Anderson asked for to say, you know, if we're really trying to connect the hospital district to the downtown, we need to put some love into Old Hampden and get a plan for how we can streetscape that better, improve walkability, have more pedestrian amenities in that area. Next is governance, 320,000. We actually are, we're looking hard at this SURF set aside of 100,000 Capital Equipment Replacement Fund. That's essentially our fleet fund. How, that's the fund where we purchase vehicles for our fleet to replace those. And we are looking hard at this, because we may actually have enough money where we can, we can get rid of this. But we'd like to keep it in as a placeholder as we're analyzing that fund. But we'd like to keep it in as a placeholder as we're analyzing, uh, that fund. There also here are three items that are not capital, but the, there is a 150,000 as a loan to the DDA. As you know, council and the DDA board will be considering establishing a TIF, um, district or tax increment financing. That's a way of, um, when, when we have new projects that come into the downtown zone that the, the money generated from those new projects or just natural increases in property values, that goes into a, a separate fund. So council is looking at setting that up, but until we do, we have no funds to run the downtown, um, district as a downtown development authority. And so this is 150,000 that the general fund would loan to the DDA with the expectation over the next few years, they would pay that back. We also, council also asked for a, a real hard look at our various policies, ordinances, housing, um, policies. And to really look at, uh, how do those, um, align with our, um, goals for equity inclusion? And to be a community that's welcoming to all. For instance, one of the things that, um, cities are taking a hard look at is, are some of our policies around how many people can live in, uh, a, a, a home, um, unrelated? Do those actually discriminate against people that, you know, uh, many times have blended families? Um, and so we really want to take a look at that, um, and make, and, and so this would be a strategic plan to look at our policies and just make sure that we are being equitable and inclusive in those. We also have a need for municipal court lobby furniture. We have some fabric furniture that lends itself to bedbugs. We have outbreaks occasionally. We need to replace some of that furniture, some of its, uh, the, as the same age as the civic center, 20, over 20 years old. Transportation, moving on to that, Safe Routes to School is a grant that comes from the feds through the state that, um, allows for, um, improvements within a quarter mile, I believe, of schools. We haven't applied for those very aggressively. So this would allow us to, um, apply for those and have some matching funds. The three areas in, that are capital on this one are sidewalk repairs of 75,000. This is what augment our concrete replacement fund and allow us to do more in 2021. Some additional bike lanes, as you know, the, um, the walk and wheel plan calls for additional bike lanes. We don't have funding currently to implement those. A big dollar amount here on rail trail segments one and two. This is along the, uh, the railroad, um, that's on the essentially west side of town. There, these are set trails that have not yet been developed, but, um, could be, um, if we had the funding. Then we also have an, an analysis of trail along the city ditch. So the city ditch, uh, as you know, tr- traverses the entire city. And Councilmember Anderson is really interested in how we actually, um, could, could put a, a nature trail or a, a walking trail along that ditch. So this would provide a feasibility analysis of that. An update to the walk and wheel plan so that we can really plan for how we want to make improvements, um, to walkability throughout the city. And make it safer. Uh, the new and enhanced crosswalks, as you know, we've done a lot of work in crosswalk development, um, throughout, uh, the last few years, but we could do a lot more. Alley maintenance, here's another 200,000. So for those of you, I forgot this was here. So for those of you that ask for more, it's already in here. So that would be, I think, 400,000 total, um, for alley maintenance. So we would actually triple the amount of alley maintenance that we're doing potentially. And then infrastructure, we have a customer assistance program. This is to help low-income folks with the increased rates and fees that we're charging for, um, water and sewer services in the city. And, um, the next one is the Broadway and 285 bridge enhancement. This is bigger, this dollar amount is bigger than what council saw two weeks ago. And that is because the engineers came to us and said, 150,000 isn't going to do what you want it to do. Essentially, if you look at the way Broadway Bridge is built now, the generation before us spent a lot of time and money making that beautiful. If you think about all of that grass that's there on those, those hill, they almost look like hillsides as you're driving under that overpass. They put decorative lighting, um, Carl's five bulb, um, light fixtures that, um, are on either side of the bridge. We, they put, um, decorative railing there with the logo of the city embedded into it. They, they really put some nice touches, a lot of flower beds. When CDOT helps us rebuild the Broadway or the, the 285 Broadway interchange, if we don't put extra money in it, it's going to look like a CDOT bridge in the middle of our city, like Dartmouth or one of those. We don't want that. We've got to enhance it because it's really the, the, the cross, um, you know, the, the center of our city and we want it to look as good as possible. This would also help us to put the murals that are called for in the placemaking master plan, um, along that underpass. It would, uh, provide funding for that as well. So it's a lot of money, but frankly, if you look at, drive I-25 north and look at what Westminster and Thornton do to those overpasses. They've spent millions of dollars to make those beautiful, interesting and a welcoming gateway feature for the city. Finally, neighborhoods, we have neighborhood identification signage. Councilmember Wink, um, asked for this. Um, and this would really, um, beef up our efforts in our neighborhood resources program. When we establish neighborhoods that they could put up signage or banners. Maybe it would be a little topper on the street sign where you have a crosspiece. It would be a little topper on top of that street sign to say, you're in the South Broadway Heights neighborhood. So that's what that is. And then finally with COVID, um, hopefully coming to an end. This would be, this 35,000 would be to beef up our special events budget and do some more cool things for the community to come together. So that was a lot of information. I see Commissioner Townley has her hand up.
I just had, um, a few general comments and questions. This was the last slide going through all of the different projects, right? I didn't want to jump the gun on that. Okay. Um, I, I guess one of the things I, in terms of, and I think you were just saying this then, for the Broadway 285 bridge enhancement, that that would be combined with, um, gateway projects or things like that. There, that would be thought of at the same time, rather than necessarily separate projects. Cause to me, that seems like a really great opportunity to create a south, like a gateway into downtown by enhancing that bridge in general. So I'm glad to hear that those are being thought of together. Um, normally I wouldn't think of hanging out on a bridge, but if you go to Golden and some places like that, they've done a great job of creating like gathering places on the bridges. And then when people are driving by, they notice, oh, there's something there. And so, um, I think that's a great opportunity. Um, a few things I was going to note, the, um, I know a lot of people have brought up the, the mental health training and things like that. And there is a coalition of youth or there has been, and hopefully they're, they will continue to be, um, through the, is it the South Platte Communities United? Um, and youth that have been working on, um, considerations for how they can alter their community to be more for, for them. So they have a connection to their community, which is a way to keep youth off of substances, help with mental, um, mental health. There's a lot of benefits for that. So it would be great, um, sort of in addition to the training that's in another bucket of funding to see if there's any way to include, um, that coalition in some of these improvements. Like if there's, um, either some of the neighborhood impro- improvements, some of the murals that are planned for going, you know, um, in the, near the bridges, um, the gateway pieces, um, and also in the SEPTED analysis if possible. Cause they, you know, the more that they're involved in any of these types of projects, then the more, um, likelihood they are, be connected to the community. And to have positive mental health outcomes. So that's just something, if there's additional dollars or dollars that they could, maybe had, be able to use and do a mural or something like that. I, I think that there could be multiple benefits from that. Um, couple other things, Safe Routes recently, uh, increased their funding to 750,000 for, um, capital improvement projects. So that might be something, if you want it to apply for a grant, you may, may need to increase that or may want to consider increasing that, um, to have more of a match. And then I just wanted to mention a lot of the communities around the state that have done things similar to Inglewood in terms of creating just more environments for, for walking, for dining outside, being able to do things for social distancing, um, during COVID have seen tax revenue increases, in some cases up to 30%. And that's really impressive considering the economic environment we've been in. So I think a lot of these things that are for placemaking and for creating more opportunities for walking, for being outside, for creating a more comfortable environment. We're going to see a, a return on that investment. So I just think that those are, are good projects to, to put forward. So, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for those comments. I, I do want to mention that we, um, Tri-County Health, um, did say, you've got to get with South Platte Communities United or Platte Communities. And so, um, I know Tony Arnaldi on our staff has worked with that group for a number of years. And she actually arranged a meeting for me last, right after I first started, um, with the city. And so they are on top of our list to reach out to for that funding that we've already set aside, um, because we think they may be a great partner to spend now.
Can I jump in? But, um, how is the Old Hampden Streetscaping Walkability connected to the Old Hampden Complete Streets project? Are those complementary to each other? Is this kind of a precursor to that or they unrelated?
No, I think they're directly related. And so, um, that plan will be the foundation for where we spend that 100,000. So, you know, it's not a huge amount, but I, I think if we can do components of that plan, um, that will be the foundation for that expenditure.
Okay. And so that looks like that's being funded into 2022. So this would be kind of a jumpstart on that.
Right.
Any other hands up?
I do not see any other hands, Chair.
Okay.
Well, madam, uh, chairperson, do you, would you like to see that unfunded, um, list of projects? Or jump right into kind of an overview of what we've heard so far that, um, Nancy, you can probably stop sharing so that you can see everybody again. Um, yeah. Well, how would you like to proceed?
Um, well.
I would say Kate had her hand up. Kate, did you have a question?
Yeah. And this might be in the unfunded projects or someone might have an update on it, but if, did we ever, um, get funding to do the mid-block, the second mid-block crossing on Broadway, or was that something that's still being considered?
Is that the Gothic Theater one?
Yes, that actually, um, is one reason, uh, Councilmember Anderson, I have mentioned his name a few times. He really wants funding for at least two additional crosswalks in stretches of major roadways. Broadway being one there at the Gothic. The other one that he's interested in is along Oxford Avenue where we have long stretches where there are no crosswalks at all, no places to cross. And so those two, I think are top of public works list, um, for where to spend those. And, and we did set aside $100,000 for that, I think, in this proposal.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry, Sean, what, what was the question before us? Which directions do we want to go?
Well, I think for me, what would be most beneficial is if, um, uh, Nancy could recap for us, um, the list of things that we've heard. And then if, if, uh, you want us to bring back a, a funding proposal for your next meeting based on what we heard, um, or have more discussion on that. Oh, and she's got it ready to share.
On top of things. Great. Thank you, Nancy.
Yeah. So, um, we heard about the additional funding for business grants. Um, obviously we can, we can recommend that. I don't know if based on, um, Director Powers' comments, if that's still something that you want to do. But we could still make that recommendation, though it is not capital. And then additional funding for mental health, again, not capital, um, but we definitely have South Platte Communities United, um, in our crosshairs for a partner. And then, um, extending the Broadway, South Broadway lighting into the parking areas behind, or I think it would be along a coma and whatever the other street is on the other side. And then, um, additional funding for South Broadway Streetscaping. So maybe beefing that up a bit more. And, uh, then alley maintenance per, uh, well, I would ask, is this still a priority now that we saw in the next, in, in the last slide that we actually have an additional 200,000? Um, so I don't know if we need to do that.
Well, I think the big issue, as, as you probably have in the back of your mind, Sean, is that do we need to keep putting more and more money into, uh, improving the alleys? Or do we need to bite the bullet and perhaps do a bond issue and start paving the, the alleys?
It's a great question. And then, uh, the Safe Routes to School, increasing that since the grant funding, it sounds like has been increased. And then create more environments for outside, walking, dining, um, as we'll see return on those investments. You know, I think that those streetscape improvements, one of the things that we're looking at, that community development is looking at is parklets. Oh, wait, parklets? Is that the, it's where the businesses come out and put a deck like in the parking area? I think they're called parklets. Um, and so community development's looking at that. Some of the funding that's in this proposal would fund some of that. So I think, um, Commissioner Townley, that's a type of thing that you're talking about, right? Yeah. So I guess, um, madam chairperson, if, uh, if there are any of these that maybe we want to have discussion on, otherwise we can forward these to council as is or?
Uh, I, well, I see Colin's hand up, so let's go to him.
I, I did want to follow up on what Diane actually brought up about the green alleys, uh, side of it. I mean, I think it is going to be obviously more, um, expensive and maybe it takes longer. But, uh, if we're going to bite the bullet and do it, we should probably try to do it the right way. And I think that would be the right way to do it. So, just as the support for, for that and as opposed to just paving.
Right. Well, that's certainly a consideration. So is the commission satisfied with forwarding these, uh, our list? To, are we forwarding it to staff or we forwarding it to city council?
We would be providing it, uh, to city council.
Okay.
The list.
Okay. Any other hands up? Oh, I see Judy's hand up, Noel's hand up.
I just, just for clarity's sake, I, if we could just take, we can maybe put the additional funding for business grants, additional funding for mental health. Just make those as just comments, but for a recommendation, I think we really need to stick to just what is ours to recommend, which is the capital stuff. So I don't know how we, um, but I'd like to see the stuff that's just comments put down into a separate comment section and then make sure that our recommendations are only those things which we are, um, supposed to be recommending. And then I'd still like to see if that list exists for what we had, what we had recommended, but council didn't see fit to, um, fund earlier. If we could, if that list is available, um, I would be interested to see that.
I bet that, um, budget manager Nolan has that ready to share. Maybe Nancy can keep editing this one while, and unshare it while Jenny maybe pulls up anything she may have. Not to put you on the spot, Jenny.
Well, Jenny is pulling in that app. I, I wanted to let the commissioners know that, uh, Commissioner Lopowski forwarded information on the Green Alley from the, um, Trust for Public Land, and I am happy to forward that on to all of you if you would like, as well as the city manager, if you would, um, want to look at it. And then if so, if you want him to send that on to city council, you can let us know.
I think both of those things would be helpful. And it looks like Jenny has given us what we were just asking for. Okay. Take and what I see on my screen here.
I'm not sure if, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. I can't find my mute or unmute button, but this was, um, the memo that was provided to city council at our May 26th retreat last year. So we, as you can see, we had the initial, um, funding on May 6th, that's around $5 million. And then we had some modifications to that original list. And you can see that, uh, we ended up, um, not needing the $2 million for the Broadway 285 interchange. So that's why that was removed down below on the May 11th.
Right.
Recommendation list. So I believe this list was, was sent. Now what's following is the entire list. And what I can do is send this out to everybody. It's, it's, um, several pages. So I don't know if now is the right time to, to review this.
Well, some, some of those pages, when we get down to golf course fund and things like that, those were really beyond our purview.
Right, right. I think we were really sticking to. Right, right. I think we were really sticking to the um, public improvement fund.
Right.
And the capital projects fund, because that's where the the need is greater than the funding availability.
Right. Yeah, the capital, capital projects fund and the public improvement fund, according to my notes from last spring, are the ones that we were asked to uh.
Way in.
Right.
So what I can do is send this to you um, or we can go over it tonight. Um, it's really your choice.
I, I think, given the the hour tonight, I think if you could just send that to us. I'm not sure, and I'm happy to hear from the rest of the commissioners. Do you want to see all of the things that are beyond what we were asked to evaluate? Or just have her send us uh, the public improvement fund and the capital projects, which are, according to my notes from last spring, are the ones that we were asked to evaluate in terms of our recommendations to city council? There's a lot of hands up, so I'm not really sure where I'm going with this, so um. How much information do you folks want to have? That's what I'm asking the commissioners.
Chair, I think uh, Kate and Noel and Judy want to reply to that, if you want to.
Sure.
Unless you're just open for all of us to talk, so.
Okay, Kate.
I I was going to reply to something else. Actually, I had my hand up for something else, but um, I'm fine getting all the information and looking at it. I mean, sometimes it's good knowing kind of, if you have an idea for a project and why it isn't in the SIP fund because it's in another fund. So I don't, I don't mind seeing all of it.
Okay. Did you want to make your other comment now or wait?
I could make it real quick. Um, I just wanted to clarify, and Nancy, this is for the notes that you were taking in terms of including the South um, Platt Coalition, um, that that would be within some of the planning for um, the SIP projects and implementation of SIP projects, not just for the mental health um, training.
Okay. Uh, Noel?
Um, I just wanted to to take one second. Um, I think I got lost along the way about um, you know, all of the the items that we discussed um, so far within the scope um, about what the numbers look like on that. Is there uh, yeah, do they just all add up to lower than the amount that we're looking for? I guess overall, just a little bit lost where we are in the process.
Well, if I could um, give some clarification, so um, the the staff council and the various um, uh, master plans have informed the list that we showed you in the PowerPoint. And so um, you have suggested some modifications to that, mostly additions, which is fine, because we've got room in that unassigned fund balance. I think the question before, um, and and we've recorded that, if there are additional items that you want to bring up, then we're here to hear those. Um, I think the question now is you've, you've got some things that you recommended that weren't funded last time. So do you want to pull any of those forward and add those to that unassigned fund balance um, list of projects? So for instance, if I could, for at the five, six, twenty, twenty meeting, um, uh, can you go back?
Sorry, sorry.
No, you're fine. Um, you all recommended, for instance, um, uh, some money for um, doing the, a security camera video server. I will, can, I'm happy to report, we were able to find that in the IT budget for twenty twenty. So, and in fact, I think we used some CARES money potentially on some of that, because we needed servers for other things. Um, so I think that's already been funded, but I, we will, Jenny and I can check that tomorrow. Um, the Dartmouth Avenue Traffic Calming, um, you all recommended three hundred and that. Did that make it into the list, Jenny?
I believe it did. Let me um, let me look.
So, so I guess what, what I'm saying is that, you know, there, there are some things that um, you all wanted that may have not been funded. Which of those projects do you want to carry forward? And that may take you, you know, some time after this meeting to look at. I don't know.
And Sean, I think the majority of these were funded. It's just now, it's, it's those um, spreadsheets that follow. There are some items that did not get funded off of those. So there's confusion.
Can you point out, like, on this, these, these sheets? Give us a picture of which ones are not funded. We would just have a dash next to it, right? On the, on the green. If it has a dash on the green uh, column, the first green column, that means it was not funded, right?
Correct. Yep, yep, it's zero dollars.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to go back to public improvement. So wayfinding of ninety thousand, that was funded.
Hmm, but just if it has a dash, doesn't mean that it was requested, though, I don't believe. It might just be that it's got a future. Um, like the Centennial Park renovations has a dash, but that wasn't going to be planned for quite a bit longer.
Right, twenty twenty-five, right.
But we all, we did zero out um, on this particular list if um, and I would have to pull together another list for you that shows what was requested versus which, which was approved.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask.
Men's for three hundred thousand, that was funded. Uh, the traffic calming was three hundred and twenty thousand versus the twenty thousand on that list. A little dry creek, a hundred thousand.
Million, I think.
And that, so I think that's where Judy goes to. She was wondering, is there a way to find out without creating too much work? I believe she said um, of what was requested to be funding that might have gotten pulled out. And I, it didn't look like it was on that first list that we looked at. At least I could distinguish, and I think that's what Noel was going to also.
Right.
Wasn't actually funded, um, I think would be good. And uh, just to build on what Kate was saying, I think having all the information is great, but just maybe another reminder for us, so we don't get offline of only the stuff that we're supposed to look at would be great, so that we don't uh, get too far.
Right.
I do want to point out that council is taking input from all, you know, citizens of all strives with regard to um, the full list. So I, I don't think it's inappropriate for you to include them, but I like um, Commissioner Brown's idea of separating it out. Like, here are our recommendations for capital, and here are some additional thoughts that we had. So I think that's fine.
Yeah. And and I can pull together that list relatively quickly.
That would be fantastic. I think that would be very helpful to all of us. Uh, it's a lot of information to assimilate tonight.
I agree.
Without having it sort of um, sorted um, of the things that we need to look at adding or um, or just recommendations.
Okay.
Meg, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just had a thought about, I mean, is it, would it be something we could consider saying, any project that was recommended last year that hasn't been funded, we recommend adding it in if the budget allows, rather than taking the time to dig through it all and confuse ourselves potentially. Since we recommended them once, I feel like they're probably all valid projects still. But I wasn't here for that, so I don't know.
I actually think that's a pretty good and elegant solution um, that would save you guys some time, maybe um, on trying to rehash those, because this commission has already recommended them. So we could certainly add those um, to that unassigned fund balance list, the the fourth slide or the fourth pot of money.
Okay, that, I would, that seems pretty reasonable. Other comments? So um, Sean, my question goes back to you. What do you need from us this evening?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I actually think you've just completed what we needed from you this evening, which is um, feedback on all of the projects that we've outlined in the PowerPoint. Um, you've, you've added some items that we will give council feedback on. Um, and and with the last recommendation um, from Commissioner Donaldson, um, we will add your unfunded projects that you recommended, but that were not funded in twenty twenty-one. We will add that to the list as possible unassigned fund balance projects. And I, I think that um, unless there's more feedback on the list that Nancy shared earlier, I think we have what we need. I I don't know if we need a vote on that. I might direct that question to Director Power um, or or Mr. Manager Burkholder, if we need a vote on that. I can't remember if the charter requires them to vote or just give feedback. Or maybe that's a question for our attorney who's on the call.
Gentlemen?
I do believe you want to vote for that.
Yeah, you want to make a motion to recommend to council your approval of these projects as laid out by the city manager.
So maybe Nancy, you could um, put that list back up and just, I know you've been doing some tweaking to that, which is great. Um, based on the comments, put that up. And so you'd be voting on that, plus um, including all uh, projects that were not funded in the twenty twenty-one CIP, but that were recommended by the planning commission. So those are your, yep, there it is. And so I think this is what the motion would be to approve what's in front of you here, and it looks like Nancy's added that last bullet under the first section of add twenty twenty-one unfunded projects.
Give you a moment to, for all of you to, to look this list over to make sure it includes what we, the work we did tonight. Does anybody have any additional comments on this list?
I just have one to, on that last bullet, Nancy, the add twenty twenty-one unfunded projects that were recommended by the commission in twenty twenty. Just so there, because there were a lot of unfunded projects.
Right. Anything else from the commissioners? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to uh, send this recommendation over to council.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none? Do we need to call for a vote, Nancy?
We do. May I uh, ask for clarification? Are you also recommending the items that city manager Louis presented tonight that were capital projects?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe we are.
Okay.
Is there a consensus on that? Any, any opposed to that? Okay.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, well, thank you, Nancy, for bringing that up.
Sure. Mr. Adams?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Townley?
Yes.
Ms. Lipowski? Yes, thank you. Mr. Hagerty?
Yes.
Oh, I just, uh, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
And Chair Austin?
Yes. I want to thank you, um, Sean and Jenny and the rest of the staff for um, presenting all of this information. It's not easy to pull this all together in a way that we can talk about it, and I really appreciate all of the work that you put forward and the work going forward too, because this is um, well, it's a pleasant situation that we have money to spend. So um, thank you so much for your uh, support and uh, help. Helpful information that you provided us tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And if I could just reiterate the part about, and and staff, because um, this was definitely a team effort between council and in multiple staff members and our budget um, team and finance team. And now you are part of that um, that list. And so we really appreciate your feedback. I know I said this last year, but I always feel like we get such a thorough um, and uh, you know, thoughtful uh, and thought-through um, analysis from the Planning and Zoning Commission on these projects. And we really appreciate the feedback. I think it only makes it better. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Sean, and I think that we would agree with this. I remember um, back in the day, we didn't have as much information as we have now, and I think uh, it makes all of the planning and zoning commissioners feel um, like we're making an impact when we have more information and have more comments to give you. So it's a mutual beneficial relationship, and thank you so much for all of you and your staff's work. So we appreciate it very much. Okay, um, attorney's choice, Dugan?
I have nothing to report this evening.
Okay. Uh, staff's choice?
Just want to update you all on the meetings coming up in April. Uh, on the April sixth meeting, we will be uh, discussing the final Title sixteen assessment report that we've been working on. City council uh, heard that uh, report uh, last evening, so we will be presenting it to you all on April sixth as well and talking about the next steps going forward. And then on the April twentieth meeting, uh, we will be starting to talk about none other than the twenty twenty-two CIP. So we'll have our fill of CIP discussions uh, coming up uh, over the next few meetings. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, great. Uh, John, did you have anything? Oh, I surprised him.
Uh, no, nothing to add.
Okay, Brad?
Uh, nothing else from me this evening. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Nancy?
Oh, thank you for asking, but no, I do, I do not have anything further. Thank you.
Okay. So Commissioner's Choice, uh, Judy?
No, I'm good. Thanks. Thanks, everybody, for all the good information.
Uh, Noel?
Uh, nothing this evening.
Okay. Kate Townley?
I was just going to say I've been attending some of the sessions at the Rocky Mountain Land use Institute Conference, and there is one good one. I don't know if we're able to get a recording of it um, once it's done, but uh, Don Elliott did a good session on equity and land use um, code updates. And I thought it might be a good one. Um, if people are interested in watching that, um, especially with the Title sixteen updates that may be coming up in the future.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Diane?
Thank you. Thank you, Kate, for sharing that. Um, I just wanted to thank the city team for putting all that information together. It's always such a lot to digest, but not only did you make that possible for us, but I also just want to commend Sean on having uh, such a nimble grasp on every project that was on this list. It was very easy to follow, so thank you.
I totally agree. Carl?
Uh, nothing here either, uh, but uh, thank you to staff and city manager and the director powers.
Kate Ford?
Nothing tonight. Thanks, everybody.
Meg?
Nothing further for me. Thanks.
Colin?
Nothing for me either. Thank you.
Okay, um, I just have one comment. It was brought forward to me that um, Carl has seen a couple of videos, I think, of uh, imaginative ways to redevelop city, city center. Um, and was questioning if um, the rest of the commission would be interested in seeing those videos. Carl, I don't know how long those videos are. Um, but just uh, can you tell me how long those videos are?
Yeah, the last presentation I saw was about twenty minutes or so, but. Yeah, the last presentation I saw was about 20 minutes or so, but I'm sure it can be cut down. It can be cut down to 10 minutes easily, I'm sure. That's very, very good presentation on what we can do with city center. And that's nice park areas around there. It's really, really a nice presentation.
Okay. So Carl, if it's okay with you, I think that perhaps Nancy and Wade, I don't want to, I'm happy to have the commission see those videos. I just don't want to have these presentations when we're, it seems like for the next couple of meetings, we're on a pretty tight timeline. And perhaps, since there are no immediate, in my mind, things that we're going to be deciding about the city center, would it be okay for us to postpone those until we have a less full agenda?
Yeah, I, I need to get ahold of the guy that would be doing it, too. And he may not even be available. I haven't talked to him in a couple of weeks, so. But I'll, I'll try to get him ready for that. And then when we're, when we're ready, have him come in and do that. That'd be really nice.
Okay, great.
Well, is there, is there any way you can just forward those presentations to us?
That's a great idea, too.
I really don't want to have to do it in a meeting.
I can ask him if that, that should be, I mean, he, he does a lot of vocal with it, but it's pretty self-explanatory, I believe. I'll ask him about that.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I saw one video by, I don't know who it was, but it was, it was interesting, his concept. It was a little bit, it was quite imaginative. So anyway, I think we would be interested in it, but I agree with Judy. I don't know if we want to spend meeting time on that, if, if it's not necessary to spend meeting time on it. So anyway. Um, anything else for the good of the commission? Okay, Colin?
I'm not going to bring it up this time, but if we have a question on a certain zoning or land use on something that's going on, like we're seeing, like I'm seeing an area that looks like it's just been sitting vacant and whether that meets codes, is that something we can bring up during this time? Or is that something that's best to email someone at the city about? Does anyone have any thoughts about that? If that makes sense?
I'm going to defer to Nancy. My guess is she's going to say to bring it up to community development first, but I don't know. Nancy?
I'm going to let Wade answer that.
Yes, I would, I would forward your questions or give me a call or email, and I can, I can help you out with that.
Perfect, thank you.
Great. All right, so no further business. The meeting is adjourned, and thank you so much. This was a very productive meeting and involved some reaching back into our history of last year with what we approved and what we didn't approve. And I really appreciate all the hard work by all the commissioners. So thank you very much and have a great evening.
Thanks, babe.